Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the February 20th Post Falls City Council meeting. We started the meeting with the evening with a workshop and are now entering a regular session. Clerk will note that all council members are present with the exception of Councilor Wolf who is excused tonight. Under ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and presentations, I have a couple announcements. Post Falls Idaho, home of the 2018 girls' 5A state basketball champions. So congratulations to the girls. Coach Allard has done a tremendous job with that team, 24-2. And the fun thing is they defeated Eagle for the state championship, and Eagle was previously undefeated. So I think it's only fair that since the girls were victorious that we throw out the same challenge to the boys' basketball team and the boys' wrestling team, who are also, according to the Coeur d'Alene Press Sports page, in line and have a good chance of winning state championships. And I think there's an article in the paper the other day that said this could be a year where Post Falls has five state championship teams. So I just love seeing it. So congratulations. Post Falls Food Bank is hosting their annual Empty Bowls fundraiser this Thursday, February 22nd, from 5 until 7 p.m. at the Post Falls Senior Center. Taste amazing soups and desserts. Get a hand-painted bowl and help support the Weekend Nutrition Backpack Program, which helps feed over 100 elementary school children in Post Falls every weekend. Admission is $20 per person. The Weinstein &amp; Dine 2018 is Saturday, March 3rd, from 7 until 10 p.m. at the Greyhound Park and Event Center. This is an annual fundraiser, and I think it might be the 22nd, if I'm not mistaken, annual fundraiser for the Post Falls Education Foundation. The evening includes a tasting of microbrews and hard ciders from local breweries, wine from area wineries, along with an array of food from local restaurants, live music, a wine tree raffle, photo booth, and silent auction. Tickets are $45 and can be purchased online at www.pfefwsd.org. Or in person, which may be easier, at various Post Falls locations, which are listed on the website. The Post Falls National Guard Armory is hosting an open house on Thursday, March 8th, from 10 a.m. until 2 p.m. Stop by and see how the National Guard serves our community, explore the benefits of service, and meet your local guardsmen. The Armory is located at 5453 Southeast Way in Post Falls. And you are cordially invited to attend the 99th Birthday Celebration of the American Legion on the 16th of March. It is $20 per person over at the Legion, and 5 to 6 is happy hour, 6 to 6:15 opening and welcome with dinner to be served at 6:30. And I would also like council for confirmation for the reappointment of Colin Coles to the Urban Renewal Commission. I neglected to include that when we added Laurel a meeting or two ago, so I would like to request confirmation for the reappointment of Colin.
Still moved.
Moved, seconded. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Thank Colin for his willingness to continue serving. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We do. We have one amendment. Under Administrative and Staff Reports, we'd like to add set a workshop date for information on design work for the tertiary treatment project at the wastewater department.
We need a motion for that, correct?
Yes.
I would move to approve the agenda amendment regarding the information on design work for the tertiary treatment project at the wastewater department.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
White?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Are there any declarations of conflict tonight? Seeing none, I will announce before we get into consent calendar, there are three public hearings tonight. If anyone wishes to testify, forms are on the back. Diaz, please fill them out, turn them in to Shannon. And with that, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes for the February 6, 2018 city council meeting. Item B is payables, January 31st, 2018 through February 12th, 2018. Item C is memorandum of understanding with concept one development for industrial wastewater reuse. And item D is local professional services agreement, 94748, with Welch Comer &amp; Associates for design of a pedestrian access project along Southeast Way from Idaho Street to Bay Street.
Any questions on the consent calendar? With that, I would entertain a motion.
Move to accept the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. I would like to welcome some scouts that just entered the chambers. Glad you could join us. Please come in and have a chair. I was able to speak to scout troop last week, and I was told that there may be a few folks showing up, so thank you for joining us tonight. We're now at the first public hearing, which is the Plaza 41 zone change from industrial to community commercial service. With that, I will open the public hearing. Tavis?
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, councilors. Tavis Schmidt, Associate Planner with the City of Post Falls. Sorry, I bumped the computer and it's not...there we go. Okay. I'm presenting the staff report for the Plaza 41 Zone Change, case file ZC-17-05. The owner is GFP Incorporated, and the applicant is Rudin Development, represented by Kirk Capin. The requested action this evening is the council's being asked to review and approve the proposed zone change from industrial to community commercial services. Shown here on this map, in the red cross hatching, is the location of the proposed zone change. So we've got Interstate 90, kind of approximately in the center of the map here. Highway 41 is running right here. We've got Wendy's at this site right here, this Spokane Teachers Credit Union right here. So this is the vacant lot due north of Spokane Teachers Credit Union. So it's in the vicinity of the intersection of Primrose Lane and Covington Avenue, west of Highway 41. The parcel is approximately 1.4 or 5 acres. It's currently vacant, and utilities and water and sewer would be provided by the City of Post Falls. Within the Post Falls Municipal Code, there are four zone change review criteria. The first one is that zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classifications, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and then geographic or natural features. Regarding this parcel here, the streets are minor collector streets. There, you know, there's a lot of traffic that will use the Covington and Primrose to kind of bisect Mullen and Highway 41 there. There's no community plans for this area, this specific, other than just the comprehensive plan, and there's been no geographic or natural features identified on site that would hinder any development. The second criteria is commercial and high-density residential zoning, typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. I did just briefly mention that the streets are minor collectors in this area right there. The third criteria within the Post Falls Municipal Code is that limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as you proceed farther away from higher-intensity urban activity. This proposed project or proposed site is right in the middle. I mean, it's a block off of Highway 41, so it's right in the middle of the higher-intensity urban activities. And the final zone change review criteria is industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and usually situated away from residential zoning. That criteria is not applicable for this site. It's going from industrial, request from industrial to community commercial services. This map shows the existing zoning, the parcel, the subject parcel is in the center with the black cross hatching. The red color is community commercial services, so it's the commercial zoning. The bright yellow is R1, single-family residential. The kind of white, light gray, and the dark gray are industrial zoning. And then here, we've got some like mustard yellow, that's some R2 zoning, and then this brown color here is a mobile home park zoning. In this area, so we've got the, everything at Mullen and 41 is red, it's community commercial services, and a lot of the properties that front Covington and Primrose Lane are commercial. And we've got this industrial area kind of in this area, which most of the uses there would be permitted within community commercial services anyways. This is the future land use map, showing that, so the red is commercial uses for future land use. Yellow would be residential. Green is public reserve, parks, city-owned properties, things like that. Purple is residential. And then the white is either I-90 right-of-way or things that are outside the city limits that are still in Cootney County jurisdiction, like all of this right here.
Purple is industrial, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, so it shows that, so behind this parcel, where the wood products manufacturing, that's industrial, and then the parcel to the south of that. So like STCU is on this parcel here. We've got Wendy's and all that strip mall up in this area. We sent this out for comments, to solicit comments from outside agencies, including the school district, water purveyors, Avista, to solicit comments back. We received a comment from Cootney County Fire Rescue, and they just said that they're neutral regarding this proposal. This is just the same zoning change review criteria up there. So this concludes my presentation at this time, so if you have, I stand for any questions.
Questions for Tavis? Thank you. Does the applicant wish to speak? Name for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Todd Whipple, and I'm with Whipple Consulting Engineers, 21 South Pines Road, Spokane Valley, Washington. Mr. Mayor, Madam President, council members, just here, we were, this application was originally made on behalf of Rudin Development, who wanted to purchase this piece of property, and it was part of an application to do a special use permit. The special use permit was denied by the Planning Commission, and so the underlying owners, the Gillis family, want to continue to pursue the rezone, which was approved by Planning Commission. They've had this property for sale for 13 years, and it hasn't actually had much movement as industrial property. And since this application is kind of early fulfillment of your future land use plan, we're here to ask you to continue the development along this area and honor the rezone that was approved by Planning Commission and future, and move forward your future land use plan and change this piece of property to CCS. Other than that, I don't have anything. Thought staff did a great job, both here and Planning Commission, so if you have any questions, I'll answer that. If not?
Seeing none.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Shannon, anyone wishing to testify?
Are we still doing five? Are we doing four? Is this four?
I think it's four.
Okay.
Wishing to speak in neutral, Bob Flowers. Bob, come forward.
Bob Flowers, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. As you can see on that paper, I am neutral on this particular subject because I believe CCS is the best zoning for that piece of property. I have some real concerns, though, because that piece of property, along with two others, went through your planning and zoning board to try to get CCS zoning and multifamily housing put in there. Well, now they're back again, trying to get just one of those parcels as CCS. I have a concern with this because of what I've heard your city attorney say to me many a times, well, not to me, I'm sorry, to you folks and the P&amp;Z Board, that all you're allowed to consider is what's the evidence presented in front of you, that you're not allowed to consider what the folks have to say personally, one way or another. Well, I know that CCS allows for multifamily, high-density housing. They can get it through, once they get the zoning, because it fits into that zone. And I'm not saying anybody's trying to end around run. I'm trying to say that they were told no once, and now they're back just with one of these parcels to try, why didn't they ask for CCS for the rest of them to the city council, like they did the Planning and Zoning Board? Something just doesn't sound right. They suddenly dropped off two pieces of property and don't want that rezoned, even though they went through all the trouble? It just doesn't make sense to me. And since I don't want to hear the city attorney tell me again that it's all perfectly legal and you guys are not allowed to listen to anybody, I just would like my concern heard.
Thank you very much.
Maybe I'll clarify a little bit. You're absolutely entitled and should listen to people that come to testify. The restriction is that when you're approving something or hearing a hearing on a land use item, you take people's testimony, you take the staff report, you take the applicant's testimony, and you weigh that against your established approval criteria. So if anybody, anybody has anything relevant to say to those approval criteria, you can certainly take that in consideration. If their testimony is about something that's not one of your adopted criteria, then that testimony really can't be considered. So it's not that we don't want people to come speak to us, we absolutely do. We just need the testimony to be germane and speak to the approval criteria.
Thank you. Was there any rebuttal coming back on that?
Feel bad making those guys get up. Real quickly, if we can go back to the existing zoning map, you'll see that the reason we didn't talk about those other two parcels is they're already zoned CCS. So wasn't that, it wasn't important at the time with the special use permit, it's just that they were already part, as a part of the special use permit, they were already CCS, and so we were asking this one on behalf of the Gillises to turn this one into CCS, and so those two are already, so that was why.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, I will close the public hearing. Council, who'd like to start?
It makes perfect sense to me.
I think it fits with the existing future land use.
So if nobody has anything else, Joe?
I don't see how it can harm the surrounding properties, so.
I'm going to move to approve the Plaza 41 Zone Change from industrial I to CCS, file number ZC-17-05.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next public hearing is the Tulamore North Zone Change from Community Commercial Service to Single Family Residential. With that, I will open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson, Council President Wilhelm, council members. Lindsay King, Planner, City of Post Falls, here to present the Tulamore Zone Change, case file ZC-17-06. Copper Basin Construction is the owner, Lake City Engineering is the applicant. Council's being asked to review the, ugh, excuse me, proposed zone change of approximately 9.3 acres from community commercial services, CCS, to single-family residential, R1. Here in the red cross hatching, you'll see the parcel being asked for the zone change to the west of Highway 41 and south of Prairie Avenue. The road directly to the west of it is Charleville. It's approximately 9.3 acres of vacant land with no significant topology or vegetation issues. Water would be provided by Ross Point Water and sewer by the City of Post Falls. There are four zone change criteria for, that the applicant will need to meet. The first being zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographic or natural features. I'll show in these maps here in these next two slides, the current zoning map. As you can see, in the red is the community commercial services along Highway 41, goes all the way up past Prairie and to the south, down to I-90. To the west is the Tulamore subdivision, which is currently zoned R1 residential. This is our future land use map. It shows the same section of town, but along the Highway 41 corridor, you can see that the CCS is significantly smaller, just south of Prairie, where it turns into the yellow where our parcel in question is. It is residential in the land, future land use map. I'll go back to the second criteria, which is commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets with higher road classifications. Charleville Road is classified as a minor collector, where nearby Prairie is classified as a principal arterial, excuse me. And you can see here, obviously Highway 41 is a highway. The third criteria is limited or neighborhood commercial, and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed farther away from the higher intensity urban areas. The proposed zone change is not directly on Highway 41, so therefore it's not right in that center of the commercial corridor. It does abut against single-family residence right now, so that would be a good fit for it. Industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes. This does not apply to the specific zone change. These agencies were rooted for comments, and we did not receive any comments. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Lindsay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Dittman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Drew Dittman, Lake City Engineering, 126 East Poplar Avenue in the City of Coeur d'Alene. For the record, here tonight to talk about zone change for a portion of the Tulamore project, as Lindsay had said, we're asking to zone change from commercial to the R1. This parcel was not a part of the original Tulamore PUD, hence that's why we're here asking for the zone change. If it was included with the original PUD, obviously we wouldn't be here, asking for the zone change. The reason for the change is so that we can develop another phase of residential property. You have the subdivision in front of you tonight, our new business on the agenda, so that's the purpose behind it. As Lindsay had said, and was the case with the previous zone change, the comprehensive plan, the future land use map, does show this as residential, although it's currently zoned commercial. We're trying to change that to make it in conformance with the future land use map. We were in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission last month. They recommended a unanimous approval. I think with that, I'll stand for questions.
Questions to Drew. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shannon, anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
Drew, you're not going to rebut, right? Just wanted to ask. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Council deliberation.
Again, I don't see how it would harm any adjoining properties, so it's consistent with the future land use map.
I would move to approve the Tulamore North Zone Change from CCS to single-family residential R1, file number ZC-17-06.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. And our third public hearing tonight is the Transportation Master Plan Update. Open the public hearing. Mr. Melvin's coming forward.
I was going to say, this was going to be three real quick public hearings. Mayor and council, tonight, we have the final presentation on the update to our Transportation Master Plan. The previous plan was completed in 2004. We would typically update that more frequently. However, we're waiting for the economy to stabilize and that we can move forward with more accurate growth projections of where we are. The plan has had a very active public involvement process through a series of open house meetings and committees. A public hearing has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission with a recommendation to adopt the plan by city council. Jeremy Clark with David Evans &amp; Associates was the project manager. He'll be making a presentation this evening, so staff is requesting or seeking adoption of the plan, would be our recommendation motion tonight following the public hearing. So with that, Jeremy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks.
Jeremy, name for the record, please.
My name is Jeremy Clark. I'm with David Evans &amp; Associates. We're at 663 West Cannonfield in Coeur d'Alene. And most of you have seen before, as Bill mentioned, we had a pretty rigorous public involvement process, and we had a workshop several months back. So a lot of the same material is in here, but I'm still going to recap for the public. So the project introduction, the Transportation Master Plan update, as Bill mentioned, the original was done in 2004. There was also an impact fee program and improvement plan implemented in 2011. That was a kind of interim update as the impact fee program was set up. The focus of the plan is to develop a fiscally constrained capital improvement plan, enhance the multimodal network, and to incorporate stakeholder input into all the projects. Some background on the project, since 2004, there have been a few changes in land use and population, as some of the numbers that hit the paper by 2035, which is our new horizon year with this plan, population is expected to go above 90,000, and that correlates to over 36,000 dwelling units through the city. That compares to the prior projection of 16, almost 17,000 dwelling units that was planned for in 2005, 2004 plan. The significance of this is that growth typically occurs over time, kind of like economics, so compounded growth, more people equals more growth. And as you see, as population grows, that's expected to continue growing, and these are all based on land use provided by a KNPO and then sorted out through the network with the city. Since 2004, the TM, Transportation Master Plan has evolved with an enhanced focus on multimodal transportation, so that is aspects in addition to vehicular. There's pedestrian, bicycle, and transit included in this plan. We also have updated the plan with the impact fee income, which is the primary basis for the projects, and use those as our fiscal constraints to keep it in limits. So the typical purpose of a Transportation Master Plan is to establish the roadway network, so the functional roadway classification, evaluate what's there, and make recommendations for any changes or additions. To identify typical street sections, which are already pretty robust set in the city, we identified a few other variations. Retrofit options and whether or not to include center turn lanes were evaluated. But the most significant and most visible aspect of the Transportation Master Plan is the capital improvement plan, so updating that plan. Since 2004, there have been 16 projects completed from the plan. An additional nine are either partially done or under design. Since the 2011 update, 11 of those have been completed, and so that shows progress into the plans that have been put forth. The impact fees that are used as our fiscal constraints, the funding for these projects, is limited to documented future deficiencies. So if there's an existing deficiency on the network, that can't be funded by impact fees, and so that's why it's important to update the plan every few years, five years, for example, to make sure that future deficiencies are example, to make sure that future deficiencies are identified before they become existing. And the nice thing about all the existing deficiencies that were identified is they were already in the 2004 plan, so they're able to be funded. A brief roadmap of the development, so this is about a few years of work onto several blue boxes. We compiled the network inventory for evaluation, then evaluated the current conditions based on traffic counts and a sub-area travel demand model where we took the KNPO regional model and made it more accurate for the city. Gathered public input. We had eight public feedback events, including open houses, multimodal stakeholder meetings, a council workshop, and from there projected future growth and identified where those deficiencies may occur and provided recommendations based on public feedback and transportation need. The findings of the Transportation Master Plan, we looked at the existing and the no-build. So how will the network compare, perform based on the growth expected and no improvements to the network? We looked at 2020, 2025, and 2035, which correlate with short, medium, and long-term horizons. Generally, the roadway segments have ample capacity as either two or four-lane roadways, depending on what they already are. The issues come up most commonly with the intersection. So as vehicles come to the intersection, the level of service or the amount of congestion that you expect to see in intersection is higher than on a roadway because of the stopping. So that's where additional capacity is identified, and those often lead to wider roadways as they widen throughout different intersections. So this is the existing roadway network. Green is good, red is less good. As you can see, all of the red dots at the intersections have already been planned for in the previous plan, so those are already in the capital improvement plan. As we move forward to 2020, so the roadway network as it is today with the inclusion of funded projects such as signals on Seltice or Seventh Avenue, which was just completed because this was done in the same time as that were included for the no-build option. So as you can see, there are a few more red dots. All of them are at intersections, so as different approaches come on to stop an intersection or yield or have a signal, that affects the level of service and congestion. So those are starting to become deficient by 2020. That grows farther by 2025, and by 2035, the existing network will, mostly intersections, but several of the roadway segments start to pop up by 2035, won't be able to handle the traffic expected in the next 20 years. So our future horizons include a build condition. So in addition to the no-build, we started with several assumptions. One of those is the assumed ITD project along Highway 41. That will have a significant impact on the traffic through the city, and so we assume that would be in place by 2025 for that horizon year. There are half-mile and quarter-mile baggage roads that are staged from the south to the north. Those are not included with the ITD project, and so those are identified for construction either through development or through city funds to be completed. We started at the south, so up to Horse Haven by 2020, up to Polon by 2025, and all the way to Prairie by the culmination of the Transportation Master Plan. There's also consideration of eighth-mile baggage roads to make access more satisfactory to commerce going along that corridor. So those are in the plan, identified for planning. Those are not in the State Highway 41 corridor master plan, but are considered necessary to break up the roadway network and actually be able to provide access. Additional project that was assumed or considered to be placed in the future horizons were the Seltice-Mullen congestion mitigation study improvements. That was done in 2012. Some of those projects that were included were the Sixth Avenue connection to Spokane Street. What that does, it ties into the ramp, on the westbound ramp, similar to Division in Spokane, and that creates a frontage road concept on the north side, which provides more access to the interstate and takes some of the traffic off of Seltice Way. Also, the Fifth Avenue frontage road but not connecting to I-90, so it starts just after the parking lot at City Hall, and Fourth and Idaho, and Fourth and Seltice intersections for improvement. So Fourth and Seltice would again provide access from the south side of Post Falls to the interstate. So those were all assumed as a starting point, and then we saw what the traffic did and then evaluated from there where additional improvements needed to be made. While we developed those improvements, we considered fiscal constraints. So the way that we calculated this was to take the existing impact fee program, what the existing bank account is. It's calculated based on the number of dwelling units or a fee based on dwelling units or types of land use. So we correlated those land uses to expected trips because that's how we were able to measure the travel demand model, our trips. So we converted that. We came up with a calculation of what we expect the impact fee income to be over the next 20 years, and that was our constraint. So we went in the 2020, 2025, and 2035 horizons and kept those as our limits. Long-term improvements that we considered, we met with the ITD, the Post Falls Highway District, KNPO, and there are several projects out there right now that are going to have a major impact to the traffic in Post Falls. One of them was the I-90 corridor study that was just completed for ITD. The State Highway 41 corridor redo. There's also interchange starting for design analysis at 41 and 90. The Hutter bypass, if and when it's installed, will have a major impact. Based on all of these projects, the long-term improvements for Post Falls were identified through the plan, so they were not going to be lost for funding, so they were identified in the plan as, excuse me, future deficiencies. But they were not allocated based on funds, so they were not prioritized. They were just listed for the project to choose from as it became available. So our capital improvement projects, the next several maps summarize what we've done over the past several years onto 11 by 17 pieces of paper. There are little circles at each one that show what the project does, whether it's safety or capacity. They identify the costs, expected cost of the project, and then the year that is expected to be in place. Some of the projects are assumed to be development-driven, so as development occurs, they'll be installed or assumed to be installed with that development. As you can see, along Highway 41, that's also grayed out. That's expected to be completed by ITD, starting in 2021. This is 2020, 2025. As you can see, 2020 is primarily focused on the, kind of the, the commercial cores. As we go to 2025, that starts to spread out into other areas, and by 2035, we just had the list of projects that are expected because they weren't allocated based on priorities. Any questions on the vehicular capital improvement projects that we've talked about?
Questions for Jeremy?
The other major portion of the project was a multimodal emphasis, and so this plan, as with many plans throughout the country, and it kind of goes along with the amount of funding that's available, has a higher focus on multimodal transportation. So that includes pedestrian, bicycle transit, in addition to vehicular, and how those all interact together. So we identified the need, conducted quite a bit of outreach, both through the general public hearings and public meetings, and through the multimodal stakeholders, including different cities and Centennial Trail groups. And recommendations are listed at the bottom. The primary was an engineering and maintenance policy shift, so identifying how the plan would be laid out, how they would be constructed, how they'd be funded, and also how they'd be maintained. That was a major discussion point at all of the meetings, was being able to maintain them so that they could be used year-round. There wasn't a lot of interest in spending taxpayer dollars on building these projects if they couldn't be used. And so changing the mindset of whether it's a separated trail, which is a little bit tougher to pave, or tougher to plow or sweep, versus a bike lane or a buffered bike lane that adds a little bit more safety for the bicycle. The second piece was a Seltice Way centerpiece. So Seltice Way goes all the way from the state line to Coeur d'Alene, and that's seen as the centerpiece of Post Falls. So being able to use all modes of transportation along Seltice Way were a priority, and identified through different parts of the plan as how those could be in place. Some areas already have a bicycle trail along the side or a shared-use path. Some don't have any capacity, whether sidewalks or bicycles. And so finding a way to incorporate those. An emphasis on planning for Class 1 trails, kind of using the Centennial Trail as a backbone and building off of them there, and reserving the right-of-way wherever possible, and primarily focusing on connecting to the downtown core and the schools with those, that trail network and the bicycle and sidewalk network. And finally, preserving any railroad and utility corridors as they're available for future use of Class 1 trails. Here's an example of some of those trails. We've incorporated the city's previous plans for Riverside Trail and also the Corbin Ditch Trail. And so these are some of them that go along from east to west between Centennial Trail and the river. And this is an example, this is the map that we created with the multimodal improvements. These improvements are not funded. They're not funded by the impact fees. There are several multimodal improvements that were funded by impact fees because they're part of the typical street sections. These are identified solely for multimodal benefit, and so these are out there looking for grants, other funding options. But they're on there, they're on the list, and so they're able to be identified for that funding. That concludes our work thus far on the Transportation Master Plan, and I'm open for any questions.
Any questions, Jeremy? I see none.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shannon, anyone wishing to testify?
We have none.
Staff wish to add anything else, any rebuttal or not, or in addition to what was said, not rebuttal of?
Nothing new. We're just seeking, requesting council's adoption of the Transportation Master Plan. So thank you.
With that, I'll close the public hearing. And I'd like to thank Jeremy and especially staff for the number of hours you put into this. I appreciate the fact that you held the open houses, invited people to come in and share their thoughts and concerns. It's a big endeavor, and I think you're helping to position us well for the future. So thank you very much for your efforts. Counsel comments, deliberation.
I would move to approve the Transportation Master Plan update.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion. Shannon, please take the roll.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, and tonight we have one item, and it's 310 North Spokane Street update and request for direction.
Good evening. We are bringing forward to you a request to have direction from council on how to proceed with the corner lot that the city acquired through a trade with the county at the corner of River Road Avenue and Spokane Street. We put the property under an RFP process with the urban renewal, and we did not receive any, any RFP prospects from doing that. We did get some comments that included my memo things like doing the EPA Phase 1. Also, they talked a little bit about the timing with the construction cost being high right now. Also, they didn't feel the timeframe was long enough that we allowed. I think we allowed about 40 days on the response time. They didn't feel that that was long enough. The downside to this is that district is closing, so the agency doesn't have enough time to do another RFP process. So the city has a couple options. One, we could just auction the property directly and go through that process, and I believe we can put a minimum bid on that. Is that correct? And the other option would be just to continue to hold the property. It looks like we'll likely have a new city center district that would open up down here, and that would allow the agency to pursue an RFP process once that new district opens up in, I'm going to guess about two years on that.
And one of the, I think council will remember, one of the benefits or advantages of running through urban renewal is it gave us some control, or gave the urban renewal agency some control over what type of business could go in there. So we would have the opportunity to make sure it was a business that fit in for a whole city center theme. And if we auctioned off as a city, we could put a minimum bid requirement, but someone could buy and put anything they want in there as long as it meets the code. So there's some benefit to doing it through urban renewal. I would agree. I think the timing was short, and I know it had to be. And I think the other thing you mentioned was that with other properties available, it would be easier for developers to buy another piece of property. They wouldn't have the same restrictions that they would on this piece of property. So as a result, we had no offers. Thoughts?
I would say hang on to it.
Me too.
Yeah, I don't see any sense of urgency to auction it off.
And I think I concur with Ron. At least you have some control if we have the property over what goes in there.
Yeah. And we can bring it back, you know, and check in with you guys in a year, year and a half. And it depends upon how that city center timeframe looks as far as the new district goes.
Joe, any thoughts?
I agree.
So you need a motion? Just direction?
I think just direction is fine.
You've got your direction?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're very agreeable tonight.
Weird, huh?
Next item, citizens' issues. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a non-agenda-related item. If anyone wishes to testify, come forward. Name for the record. Bob.
I, this is just an idea I had, but after the last meeting, and I saw the cost of your engineering and design of a parking lot, I was really wondering why the city, the city employs some very talented people, engineers, designers. I'm sure that the city has the talent to design even a, you know, a parking lot, and we just approved tonight another, well, no, it's on the agenda. I can't use that. Well, anyway, I believe that we're spending a lot of money on engineering and design projects that I believe could be done in-house just as well and possibly save us some money because the cost of those designs on that, on that parking lot were almost 25% of your allotted funds. I mean, it just didn't make any sense to me when I believe that you have the talent to do it in-house. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Bob. I think we addressed that concern. I think a couple of us raised a concern with the costs, and I think we had pretty good responses that the timing of it, the time required to do so, et cetera. And I don't know if we have engineers on staff that could design all aspects of it, so.
There are certain things that are beyond the scope that our engineers have with the parking lot. It's just the timing. We can either be reviewing plans and getting other projects out the door for the developers, or we could be doing the parking lot. So with that, we chose to actually have it designed with JEB. We do some of the design work with our city projects in-house, though.
And Bob, just so you know, every time I see an engineering or consulting fee, I cringe, but I understand there's reasons we need to do it, but it doesn't make it real palatable either, so. Anybody else? Next item up is new business. Tonight, we have Tullamore Seventh Edition subdivision. Lindsey.
Make sure I get the right presentation. Dokey, I think I got it. This is my opportunity. I should have said it. All right, perfect. Mayor Jacobson, council, Lindsey King again, city planning. Here to present Tullamore Seventh Edition case file S-17-10, copper basin construction as the owner, Lake City Engineering as the applicant. City council is being asked to review the subdivision request and approve the proposed subdivision along with any necessary or appropriate conditions. The request is to subdivide 9.76 acres into a single-family residential zone, which we just approved earlier this evening. It'll be 40 lots with two phases, the initial phase being 28 lots, and I'll show you that in a map in just a moment. This is the parcel in question again, west of Highway 41, south of Prairie. In the red hatching there, as you can see, to the south and to the west, it's the Tullamore subdivision that currently exists. Surrounding zoning is Community Commercial Services along the Highway 41 corridor and then just slightly to the east and west of Prairie. To the west of it is the R1 residential for the Tullamore. Current land is vacant with no significant vegetation or topology characteristics. Ross Point Water District would be providing the water. City of Post Falls would be providing the sewer. Here is a preliminary drawing of the subdivision. As you can see, on your left side is the Phase 1 of the 28 lots. On the right, or the east side of it, will be the 12 lots in Phase 2. The average lot size will be about 10,629 square feet, which is well above the 6,500 square foot minimum required for the R1 residential zone at 4.1 units per acre. New streets proposed will be Glenro Avenue and Connery Loop, which will connect to Charlottesville Road. There are six subdivision review criteria that need to be met in order for this project to go through. First being water supply system, which we've taken care of with Ross Point Water. The second would be an adequate provision for public sewage system, which will be provided by the city of Post Falls. The street- Number four would be all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards have been identified, and that the proposed use is compatible with such conditions. There are no topographical conditions or hazards on this area as it is vacant old farmland. Number five is the area proposed for the subdivision is zoned for the proposed use, and the use conforms with other requirements found within the code. As we presented earlier this evening, it will now be zoned R1 residential, which will conform with all the other requirements found. The last criteria would be the developer has made adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no more than its fair share of costs to provide services by paying fees, furnishing lands, and providing other mitigation members for off-site impacts, such as streets, parks, and other public facilities within the community. This is taken care of through impact fees upon development. The applicant has met all six subdivision review criteria. We have routed all of these agencies here. There was a comment from Cooten County Fire and Rescue, which is in your staff report, it was a neutral comment regarding access and fire turnarounds. Again, here's the parcel site, and I'll stand for any questions.
I'd just like to thank you for showing the different agencies that comments are solicited from. We've heard comment in the past that we don't check, you know, what about such and such an agency? If my math is right, there's two dozen agencies or groups that were contacted. I think it's important to note that, so I appreciate that being, Shannon.
Of course.
Thank you. Steve?
I have a question, it says if, on Prairie Avenue, if the widening isn't done by the state, that the project would be doing that, how wide would they make Prairie Avenue? Would that be, are they required to make it four lanes there, three lanes?
We'd have to refer to our engineering department on that.
Mr. Paulus?
Councilman Anthony Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. The requirements along Prairie Avenue is it will be a five-lane arterial roadway. Their widening requirements would be to take the edge of the pavement from where it is now and to widen it to the rest of the five-lane half-section.
Okay. Thanks, Rob. Any other questions? Thank you, Lindsay.
You betcha.
Counsel. Need a motion to approve, I would assume?
I would move to approve Tullamore Seventh Edition subdivision, file number S-17-10.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Seeing none, Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item, ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we have one resolution dealing with the body worn and in-car video storage.
Move to approve the resolution, body worn and in-car video storage.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion.
Chief, I know it's kind of a dumb question, but is there any risk of statute of limitations claims or something like that by disposing of these in three years instead of five?
No, by the tort claims act, we have to, they have, is it six months to notify us by tort, and then 18 months to file a suit, so we're covered by keeping it for the three years.
Thank you.
This also complies with our record retention schedules from the state. This exceeds the amount of timeline that you'd need to retain these under statute. So there's, we looked into those items to make sure that we're okay. The items that fall under this are typically the non-eventful stops, that don't have anything come out of, because if there's charges and other things that result, those things are kept longer.
Perfect, thank you.
Shannon, please take the roll.
Anthony?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up, administrative staff reports. We need to set a workshop date for information on design work for the tertiary treatment project at the wastewater department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have a proposal from JUB to do the design work on our tertiary treatment project at the wastewater plant, and we wanted to go through, it's a fairly long process and also a detailed proposal from JUB, and we wanted to go through that with council prior to bringing it to you for approval. We were looking at just adding a workshop at the March 6 meeting at 5:00, if that's possible. I'm not sure what the schedules are for council members. Mr. Mayor will be out, and our council president, Linda Wilhelm, will be running the meeting that night.
And why we'll meet with staff prior to leaving?
I, excuse me, I won't be here, I'm, get back on the 7th of March, so I was going to miss the meeting anyways on the 6th.
Okay.
Could you leave on the 1st? When do you leave?
Friday.
Could we include if she's available when we get together to go over this, if that makes sense?
I can look at that date and get in contact with Carrie. What we were going to do is John Beecham was going to present to the mayor and myself, and warn if he's available, and talk about the...
I think it's, or maybe it's March 2nd.
Yeah, we'll reach out to you.
Yeah.
If the time works, we'll reach out, if not, we'll make sure that you get brought up to speed.
Oh, thank you.
Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is one this staff cannot do in-house.
Not for the price tag.
Yeah.
I can't remember, I just looked at the numbers, the tertiary, was that the $30 million ticket, I think?
The entire project, I think, is 26 million.
So it's a huge, huge item, and of course, you have to be compliant with all the PMP requirements and everything else.
Right.
So you got a date then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no other comments, other than to again, to once again congratulate our girls' high school basketball team, and with that, council comments? Anybody have anything?
I'd like to request a police escort up to the high school where the Post Falls boys are playing, the Word Lane Boys, the winner going to state tournament, so if you can meet me in the parking lot.
She wants sirens blaring, lights flashing.
Or not, you know, if you're not busy.
Anybody else? And we do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not.
Once again, I'd like to thank the scouts for joining us tonight, you're welcome anytime, as are all your friends, and with that, an entertaining motion?
Adhere.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adhere, thank you very much.